Mr. Curry?
Yes.
And Councilor Jacob. And Mr. McKeon?
Oh, I get to be both.
I noticed you looked down like we weren't going to call on you. We learned that a long time ago.
I know better.
You know what that means. That's when you get called on.
Item A, scheduled invoices totaling three hundred forty-two thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-six pence. See the attachment. The invoices are available to the public review in the finance department. Item B is accounting pensions for the following retired employees under option A planned pay from excess levy. And you may direct any and all questions to the bird treasurer.
Anybody have any questions? They have an already answer.
I was just going to ask.
He's looking for something to ask.
Four hundred forty-one, there's seven dollars and forty-seven cents.
Mr. Plis, that's important.
Miss Plis.
Okay, if there are any more questions then we'll call for questions on this. All in favor of the finance items?
Yes.
You left that in August later also. Okay, personnel, okay, motion. Sir. And look.
Okay, section A is for the employment of a short or long-term substitute professional personnel. Section B is the employment of professional personnel. Section C, transfer of professional personnel. Section D, employment of service personnel. Section E is the transfer of service personnel. Section F is employment of extracurricular personnel. Section G is a leave of absence. Section H, resignations and/or retirements, and that is noted under the effective date, whether it's resignation or retirement. Section I, reclassification of service personnel. And... From the other one, the old one that we had, H four, section H four, that was changed from a termination to a resignation. That was the difference.
H four?
H four. And you will notice that we're abolishing a special education department, central office professional position, accounting diagnostician slash IP specialist, and abolishing a Duval pre-K professional position, technology integration specialist. Any questions about any of that?
Questions? Okay, if not, we'll ask for most of your call for question. Personnel schedule, all those in favor of these items?
Yes.
Now move down to comments concerned.
I remember you all wanting to have that thing on the soccer field.
We all did.
We all did.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Snyder is here to give you today's update.
Well, obviously, when we did our walkabout, I guess in the spring, we talked about extending it forward and wide, and obviously, we can't extend that unless we get some dirt. So, we're still in the process of trying to get that dirt moved from the football field down to the soccer field.
Just, I don't know any, very little about this day and every day, but I know when we were over there, one of the people that looked at it later on, he was at, because I thought we were going to be hauling dirt out of there for a while. He indicated to me, he didn't think we were going to have any extra dirt. He thinks that the dirt is going to be taken out of one side and just going to be moved around and leveled up the other. But I mean, I don't know anything about this.
I know that we had our fellow from the, some firm came and actually did the grade levels. We've got a six-foot?
That's low.
It's high, yes. Yeah. So, the thought was there would be some extra dirt, we thought, once we got finished, because you remember the ditch line will be full pipe, that's only full dirt. So, the thought was we needed to move that dirt to the soccer field first. That's the last conversation I had with anybody was moving dirt. That's kind of where we're waiting on that to expand it wider and longer. We could take the fence down if you're looking for some movement, but I think that would, uh...
Just shut me up.
Turn this stuff down.
But our goal is to, this time next year, to be playing ballgames on that, be playing soccer games. That's a have to, that's a must.
So, that's our goal?
That's what our goal, to try and make something happen at the end of the year. But again, we thought we'd be pushing dirt in May, and we've not pushed one bit of dirt.
So, we can't do anything until they start on the ball?
Well, if you go down to the soccer field, you can see there's a one side, there's a kind of pretty good sized drop-off, two or three foot drop-off. The whole idea is you have to build up to that and slope it, especially if you go eight, 10 feet in this direction, eight, 10 feet in this direction. It has to kind of go from where the field's at to nothing. So, we're thinking there has to be a pretty good bit of dirt brought in there. And the water lap has to be moved also. There's a water lap that's got a spigot sticking out, probably eight, 10 feet. That's the goal line toward the creek. You'll see there's a spigot sticking up where the basket will be offside.
Could we go ahead and at least do that part, the water line?
We could do that.
Hopefully, the dirt will come soon.
We can do that.
Any chance for construction company donating some dirt, express the...
We thought they would donate time and excavators to help the football field. The issue you have is when you talk to folks that are working in the industry, with Marcella Shale, other than right now, folks that work or folks that have equipment, they're up there making money, they'll, you know, we're not primary on their list, I guess.
Well, how long is this dozer we have now?
It's been sitting there two weeks.
I mean, how long do we, are we going to be able to keep it?
It's afraid of Mr. Christians, and he brought it over and dropped it off, said, "Need it, it's here as long as you need it."
So...
It's not a very big dozer, but it can push dirt.
Oh, I was going to ask how long. So, that's one person that I always looked at for this one, how this party, I think he's available now. If he was just saying it's, you know, with the size dozer that he's had, he goes, "It'll take me a month or two," where opposed to a big one, he goes, "In a week's time, we could do this." And I think that gets back to what Derek was saying earlier. If you had an excavator and a dozer the right size...
You'd do it in a week.
In a week's time, you'd do it.
That's correct. So, that's where I am.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably rent a very large dozer for about two thousand dollars a week.
Well, he'd gotten that, he'd taken the initiative, got a quote out of Parkersburg, and they were taking into account of the school, and they, it was for the, a large excavator and a large dozer, but I think it was like for forty-five hundred dollars.
For a week, including the operator?
No.
Yeah. The operator would cost you that amount too, probably, roughly. Unless you had someone that could operate it here.
I think he had a quote there that was maybe nine thousand dollars to... We'll let you all look at those parts of it. I think you'd like to see something done out there.
So would I.
And if you think we can be of assistance in some way, let me know. Everybody heard him, or Derek mentioned there the money that's already available for that. I don't know that anybody would have opposed using that. I mean, I'm in favor of using it myself, so...
Absolutely.
That's why I think if you all just give with the super today and all, then you all can decide how you want to do that. And certainly with Bernie, the treasurer today, I definitely want to make sure that any quotes and all this kind of thing is done properly.
So, would you want us to hit and start? Maybe you look at, Mr. Whittaker, separate any dirt you?
I think we'd like to give with Ms. Super today.
There should be plenty of dirt out there, whether it's dump truck and a loader.
That's what I think, too.
I mean, not necessarily where you're going to take all the football field, but we only have...
That hillside?
Yeah.
How many yards you talking about? How big a project would the soccer field be? Do you feel like...
I think we said ten feet, about ten, it's not that far off. But if there's such a, the drop-off on the corners, it's probably the largest area of dirt, because it's a pretty significant drop, I remember.
It's not really...
I'd say they could fill it in a day's time, with a dump truck.
It's not that... You all would just give the penny, cut the super dent there, then...
I'd contact Almond Springs, see if he'll give you a price on the dirt, with the dump trucks and the equipment going.
No sense in wasting those.
Maybe somebody else, county, I don't know.
Okay.
It was. Okay, now, these are preliminary numbers, and I'll try to explain these to you at my, my, uh, my writing episode of the, uh... If you'll see at the top, this was a projected enrollment for two thousand thirteen fourteen. And under the pre-K column, these are the numbers preliminarily at this point. These are the students that are actually coming, okay? We counted bodies. Under the K, you will see there are some numbers that we have written in, just like the first one. We had projected that there would be forty-one at Duval, but when we actually counted the students, there were forty-four. So, that's what that second number is, all the way across. Instead of forty-three, we actually had forty-two first graders. Instead of thirty-six, we had thirty-four. Instead of forty-one, we had thirty-nine. We had the forty-eight fourth graders. Instead of forty-five, we had forty-four. And then there were the ninety-one, seventy-eight, and seventy-eight. And the total at the end had been projected to be five hundred and one, but we had five hundred twenty-six. This was the first, after the first week, wasn't it, Mrs. McKeon, that these numbers came in, and they sent them to us each day. Same thing with Hamlin going across, fifty-one pre-K students. Instead of fifty-five, there were fifty-eight kindergarten students, first grade forty-two. I think you can go all the way across. Instead of four hundred and seventy-eight that had been projected, there, we've counted five hundred and thirty-five, and these are actual bodies that have shown up. And as you can see, all the way down, what had been projected, and then we have put the amount at the outside, the number of students that have shown up. And at this time, there were three thousand six hundred and twenty-two that have shown up, and at the second month report last year, we have... Three thousand seven hundred and thirty-six.
Seven hundred and thirty-six.
Yes.
We estimate about a hundred and fourteen students below what they were last year this time.
But we do not, they do not take the official count at the second month, so, you know, we have to send them the first month, which is the ninth September.
At that point, we can write a nice report, weakness. Didn't we hear that recently, wasn't it kind of a state-wide, I mean, I forget the counties that they mentioned, that, I mean, it's like overwhelmingly, they're declining enrollment.
I read that paper.
It was like three, four of them are still, I'm just thinking. What happened here, I mean, at Hart's kindergarten, we got shocked there, didn't we?
Uh, that is retentions. Yes. When, when, at the end of the year, because what he projected were the numbers that were in that class base at that time, and that had to do with retentions.
Well, are they crowded up for now? Are they, can you prove some truth?
No.
Well, not worth paying.
Uh, let's see. Last year's second, last year's... They had five, at West Hamlin, last year, they had five hundred and sixty in the fourth month record. They had five hundred fifty-seven in the second month report last year.
Hart's kindergarten, about twenty-two, he just speculated that you had to add a teacher there.
We actually moved one, and we were waiting on a, uh, account to see, with the new law, we could move a teacher from one school to another. So, we were waiting till all of that settled down, because we did move one, and it was, we had one that was one place, and we moved them into another. We have a surplus, as they are terming them, they have surplus to you.
So, should this train continue? As we plan for next year, it's going to have to take these former students into a gown, and that's...
Yes, right. It is. It's just something, it is. And you will see with the new law, as we are going to have a work session with Wesley, talking about the new policy five thousand, and how we are able to project if we have retirements and surplus people, what we can do with them without posting positions and without doing brief letters and terminating the subject and being able to...
So, it's a first decrease in student population. We've had it for four or five years. The train had been increasing and increasing, so it's a first dip we had.
Wrestling.
Wrestling? Oh, I've got wrestling.
I do, though.
Yes.
Yeah, several weeks ago, you know, as you recall, board was approached about giving consideration to offering middle school wrestling, starting programs. And I had had a conversation with Gary Ray, with SSAC, and he indicated that what we need to do was have a survey conducted at the beginning of the school year to determine the interest level at each one of those middle schools before we did anything else. And I have now heard back from all the principals who've conducted surveys, and I'll just give you a breakdown here for school. This is from Hamlin PK eight, and according to Mrs. Ferguson, she has approximately ten students who said that they'd be interested in wrestling if it was offered. At Duval, Mrs. Clayton has indicated that, according to her survey, she would have approximately twenty-five students who'd be interested in wrestling. Guy Valley Middle School, Jonah Atkins had indicated that he had a large number of students who said they would be interested. His number was sixty-four.
Kill us all.
And at Hart's PK eight, Linda Tony emailed me, although she didn't give me an exact number, she said there was considerable interest in starting a wrestling program there with her students. How many of those would actually follow you and participate, she didn't know, which would be the same at any of those schools. So, the next step is, you know, to decide whether or not we want to take the next step and create wrestling coach positions and post such.
Have we ever gotten to the point of where they would practice, conduct their meetings, and all these kind of matches? I mean, I mean...
Well, they'd have to have equipment in the school, too.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's not just an issue with the coaches, then, is it? I mean, is that... Because I think, aren't some of the kids right now, don't they come here even from the Duval area in addition to Hamlin, so they were kind of, everybody was doing it here, weren't they?
Yes.
So, do we envision that being here or out of the local schools?
Another conversation ensued the night the board meeting, when the board members were approached, was possibility of using this one location here in the central office for students from Hamlin, Duval, and Guy Valley, that they could all make use of what we have here.
Yeah, something like that.
It would be a little far for Hart's to come to.
But I think in order to do it, they've got to have, there's certain kinds of mats and all they have to use, right? It's not just like...
They're expensive. Like that from here. They're nice.
And then, as far as the actual, I'm not sure what the word is, are those down at the high schools, we have home, home matches?
We do have the home matches.
Is that the only place that we do, you know, game for lack of a...
Yes, it is.
So, these other schools, like even, you get to the arts, they would like to have a place to have their matches, right? Unless they came over here, too.
Right. The tournaments, they host a tournament. Do they not jam every year?
Every year, yeah.
Saturday, Sunday, all day? Lincoln County High School.
Do you all think about the idea here? We need to have more of an estimate on what it's going to cost us as far as the facility and the location, equipment, those kind of things. Do we need to know more about that?
How often have they approached us?
Take it, man.
Really, you know, you're kind of going to...
I'm going to say it, I just don't know how you, in Hart's, I mean, certainly, you'd welcome to come to Starbury, a long way.
We don't, for transportation, do we?
Just the usual, have a athletic bus or a school bus.
Activity bus. Those are both corrections.
But under this scenario, Jeff, I didn't want to make the K.K. mention whether or not any of them could merge, that if there were this great of an interest, it would be an emergency, right?
Right.
Every school would have to compete on its own. Is that right?
So, as long as there was a intent, I mean, we made an effort to try to offer a program at each one of those schools, and let's say we're not able to do so at Duval, or we couldn't do it at Guy Valley, those, at that point, those students would be given an opportunity to come to another location, let's say, to Hamlin and compete.
As if, if we could not secure a coach...
Right.
For those areas.
Wasn't Danny Baker involved in that?
He is assistant president, County High School.
I think he was, he talked about it down in his, no, some of them, I think that's how those numbers got, encouraged of them. Which is a good thing.
I think we need to look at what it's costing in the high schools for wrestling, taking, if we do all these schools, will we find out?
Well, one, I don't think that coaches' salaries are, would be the same. So, it's going to be less, but the biggest, some of the rest will be able to use it, that's the biggest obstacle, isn't it?
Did you say the coaches was like a thousand dollars a year, or something like that?
That's a good approximation.
The coaches really, the expenses, the equipment, right? I don't know, did they remove, out of the room, they was an old normal mechanic, when they were here in the high school, didn't have a really good place to practice.
Yeah, they're in the old building construction shop, okay, even now.
I think they're pretty content with it, something they have down here. For two schools, I'm, you know, maybe even Guy Valley, I mean, it's... It's definitely...
If you start bringing them all, Gary, you got trouble.
I don't know whether you can accommodate them in here or not.
If you could offer it a single school, you know, what, you'd say, well, we'll pilot this and try it at Hamlin, you know, this upcoming year. But the issue is, is that if that's your approach, then students from Duval and Guy Valley wouldn't be able to come to Hamlin to participate. There first has to be an effort made to offer a program. That's, you know, SSAC, I can understand why they take that.
I don't like Brendan, that's, I don't know what these mats cost, but I mean, they are...
Well, I'd forward having the programs if we can afford it, just to, like you were saying, that is the big thing.
I agree with you. I don't think it's the coaches that's the problem as far as most...
Sure, but that would create five, five separate programs, so we have to find, so we have to...
So, it's to be like the first thing we need to do is find out what the cost, get a cost analysis, and then take it from there.
We can go to all of that, finance, wrestling.
Who is our finance person? Shouldn't I have that? What is that? Let's give a count.
Listen, if you all could, at some point, come back to us, you know, give us an idea what this policy makes a better decision about. Anything else, Mr. Wrestling Coordinator?
No, not long enough.
Is there something he says aside? The next one, the employee absences, I would request, because I'll be discussing specific people, I would request that we could go into executive session.
We're going to discuss some of the personnel issues in there, too.
Probably might be something else we'd like to discuss.
Apparently, going there after that...
Yes.
Is there anything, before we move on that, anybody has anything else that we could devote a little bit before we go into executive session? Any other comments or concerns, something I might want to do together, or is that going to be the last thing?
No, I do have something, you're about the September seventh board meeting, because that's the night, seventeen, the board meeting. That's the evening that we're going to also have the award ceremony. So, we need to figure out what that's going to look like, what time the board would meet, what time the ceremony would be.
Well, then, last year, we have a board meeting at six, and then start that at seven, then if we, we need more board time, we come back after the ceremony, so, and finish the board meeting. I think it's way we'd have left here.
And lots will depend on what time.
We're trying to keep that agenda short.
Yeah. You're going to have a couple of weeks, so it might not be, but like Fred said, if need be, we could obviously recess and come back.
Take the six P M.
But you all just...
Then transition to the office.
Six o'clock, I think, is where everybody wants to stay.
Was there another question we had about the agenda events with Leo?
No, no Leo.
Mr. Lampel.
I just have one thing for our meeting on Thursday night, we're going to establish a secret inscope, just to remind everybody to, you know, to maybe look over last year's, because it gives us a... cause it gives us something to base it on.
They just give you all these things, cause I'm from the...
Okay, so Brenda has, oh, you've got, okay, good. So, if everybody could just kind of take a look at those before Thursday night, that way if you could see something, you think maybe we don't need any longer, or maybe you're finding something that we might wanna add, just something for discussion, we could have it now.
This is the actual agenda for Thursday, the same postage. So, I posted it today on the line, but...
Okay.
So, our, our new county website, um, we spoke to Danny Daly about that today, um, the county website as well as the each individual school's website. That ought to be complete this week, so hopefully, you'll be able to see, um, the new websites that are technology focused, that we get. Uh, we got to see a little bit today, it looks really nice, it's gonna be much different than what we've had before.
Easier, followable, even people that are...
They're drunk, we'll get down to what they're looking for.
Uh, one other thing, just real quick, uh, spoke to Rod Cummings about the fuel tanks, the one at Guy Valley as well as the one at Hart's. And I'm not sure what the issue is, I, I wasn't, you know, he wasn't able to explain to me what, what the problem was, that this company's gonna have to come back again Friday to finish the work. So, he's hopeful that whatever it is that they need to do, they'll be able to complete that job this coming Friday. And then, we have the old tank at the Hart's intermediate school already up on the list of the auction. It's been included in what Dana has already put together.
I think I've shared with everybody that, uh, the Hart's Community Center is one of the, the trailer, for the, it's gonna be there in a different location, so, we're not quite, I mean, again, as far as time's concerned. So, that'll, that'll work out well. I didn't ask where they want to put it, just if they wanted to move it, that was correct. Okay, anything else? Okay, there was, uh, we need a motion in to go into executive session for personnel matters, so, question by a super ten, Mr. McAllister made a motion? Is it Miss Sagan did?
7:34.
7:34.